Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf. Committee of the whole meeting today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 at 6:15 PM. Typically, as you know, we have these meetings on Mondays at 5:00. Due to the Fourth of July holiday and observance, we moved the meeting to today. And we have three consent agenda items. But before we get to our agenda, I'd like to introduce our Director of Community Development, Mr. Mark Hunt, who has an introduction for us. No, Jason Schad's gonna do the... Mark Hunt's at the front. Our Finance Director, Jason Schad, had some luck in filling a position. And we'd like to hand it over to Jason Schad to introduce Monty.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you all are well aware, our longtime IT Manager, Terry Allen, retired last week, June 30th. And I'm pleased to introduce our new IT Manager and new team member to Bettendorf, Monty Sockson, to Mayor Council and the staff that's here.
Monty? Thanks for coming tonight. We look forward to many years of a fruitful working relationship. Thank you very much for joining the team.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move to our City Attorney, Chris Kern, for our first consent agenda item discussion. This is on Consent Item B, as in boy. Counselor Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the consent agenda tonight is an agreement with CP Railway Company. And as we've talked before, in the fall of '21, CP and Kansas City Southern filed an application for merger with the Surface Transportation Board. These are both Class 1, very large railroads, and any sort of merger of this magnitude requires regulatory approval. As I set forth in the counsel letter, there's two parts to this approval. One is sort of the transportation and a competition sort of issues, the economic issues. And then the other part would be the environmental issues, including how this sort of merger would impact a city and anybody else that might be affected by this type of merger. As the application showed, the City of Bettendorf, along with some of our other cities on the Mississippi, are pretty significantly impacted. The railway traffic will approximately triple if the deal closes and is executed. So we basically have seven trains, large freight trains, that come through our city today. It would go to '21 eventually, when every... all of the... the deal kind of is put together, which would be, I think, '27. 2027 is when it would actually all sort of, not just close, but would actually come to fruition, where they are kind of going fully from Canada to Mexico with this merged company. So in any event, we've gone through this, a very public process of how would a community be impacted. We went through the formal process, provided comments to the STB, worked informally with the STB and the OEA, which is their environmental department of the STB. And we worked with CP because CP recognized that we will be impacted. And so CP actually came to us before the merger documents were filed. We knew that this was happening. They came to us. We talked about how we would be impacted, certainly safety, noise, land use issues, you know, with the... how the southern part of our city on the south side of the tracks would be somewhat... it would be harder to get there. So we put all this in our comments. We worked with CP. And now we're to the point in working through the environmental process of, do we enter an agreement with CP to mitigate the effects of this merger? The STB could give, as a condition to the merger, to approving the merger if they do so, which, you know, this agreement is contingent upon the deal closing. If the STB were to provide mitigation actions, they're specific, they're project-specific. They are, you know, a quiet zone or some sort of vibration mitigation or some things like that. What CP has offered is a dollar amount, a $3 million dollar amount for the city to mitigate the issues coming from the merger. Gives us a chance to leverage that money and to make... to sort of see how we are impacted and to really do more than what I think the STB could do. So that's what's before you. I will say also that we did, as part of this, as part of our due diligence, we engaged Snyder and Associates to look at the quiet zone issues. Brent and Brian looked at that. We feel that the dollar amount that's as part of this agreement is significantly more than what the quiet zone issue would require, allowing us to do some other mitigation actions. We looked at also other similar mergers and what was required from the board. Grade separations were very, very rarely required and not in situations like ours. So that's where we are. We've got this proposed agreement before you. We do believe that it's in the city's best interest, but that's ultimately your decision. It is contingent on the deal closing. So if the deal doesn't close, we don't get the investment from CP. And obviously, you know, this requires us to not further challenge the merger. So that's what's before you. I know that there have been a lot of people involved, so if anybody else wants to chime in, but that's the decision at hand tonight.
Mr. Plain, Chief Negotiator.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We did look at this also from the staff perspective about how we could access some of the streets off of 31st, 33rd, 35th, 42nd. And we previously, as you well know, have a overpass slated for 26th Street as part of any development that would occur with the development into the Goldstein property and would pay for that through a TIF agreement, having TIF pay for that bridge. So we believe that if there's an overpass, an additional overpass into the southern part of the city, that overpass would likely be that. And it would connect, for Greg and Bill who are on staff, we can make our way by Depot Street to 31st, 33rd, 35th, and then 35th connects with 42nd. So those areas that appear to be somewhat landlocked, at least from an emergency response, we can get there. It's not... it's a little tedious, but it's not... it's doable. And so we never felt that we were gonna be able to get an overpass through STB. So in looking at this agreement, we think it's generous relative to what we think STB would offer. And we think we have alternate solutions available to us to get to those southern locations where we have gas tanks and where we have Bar-Sol Chemical, were the two that gave us the strongest concern. So we feel that we've got an alternate opportunity and that this will help us solve our quiet zone issues and perhaps work to be able to give other mitigation, other parts of the city with the additional dollars. So we very much recommend that you consider accepting this agreement and passing it.
Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. When would we expect a check? In 2027?
No, I believe that the deal is... it's certainly... these regulatory issues take time. It would be within 60 days of the deal closing or of approval coming from STB, which we think that the EIS will come out in the near future. The draft EIS goes to final, I think, perhaps sometime in '23 is when this would potentially come to us. Not this year, I don't think.
Thank you.
Scott.
I'm sure. I mean, I think the first thing, and I don't know if you said it necessarily, that we can't really stop the traffic from coming in any way, shape, or form, correct? I mean, they're gonna go from seven to 20-some. We have no recourse to say you can't come through because it's there.
Right. I mean, we...
We can't.
If the STB approves it, right, if the STB rejects it or does something else, you know, requires some sort of divestment of part of it or something, then that would... but that's... it's not up to us. We are kind of along for the ride, if you will. And this is the best deal that we feel we could get.
And there's some requirement by them that they can't stop and block streets for an extended period of time, correct?
That's right.
And this agreement would not override that agreement. It looks like it overrides if STP decides something different, but it wouldn't override their normal laws.
No.
Their normal requirements that they can't sit there for... I don't even know what that period of time is. It's not very long.
You're right. It does not.
It does not affect the requirements for stopping, you know, for delays or for not allowing traffic to pass, you know, for sitting on a... at one of the at-grade crossings, as we've seen. And as we've discussed with CP, and they've been, you know, they understand the issues. They don't want it stopped any more than we do. I think there are processes in place, and hopefully that can be improved. We've talked about different ways to communicate with people that might be stopped, to how they can make the call and to the number. But this agreement doesn't affect those issues.
And it won't affect our flood wall downtown. Because we've had that issue before where they've tried to blow through that thing or wanted to continue going, but we have to stop by some period of time, right?
So the only issue we had was during the flood. And frankly, it really gets determined by the water plant. Once the water plant has to stop traffic to be able to make sure that it's secure, it'll stop all the traffic. We had, you know, they were running, if you remember, during that period of time until that point, and we thought... we had differences of opinion at that point. But we figured it out, I think, that once the water plant closes, for all practical purposes, then it's done. And they understand that. I think at that point in time, and I'm pretty sure I'm right, they were also... the northern route for CP was affected by the flooding in North Dakota, so they only had this route. So they were trying to make sure they could get as much product through during that period of time. So... but we think that got resolved. Once the water plant closes, everybody knows all bets are off. They gotta stop.
I mean, we're protected higher than the water plant anyways, aren't we?
Well, we're protected about the same level. We have a gate at 10th Street that we wanted to shut, but we don't need to... based on our experience now and based on the work we did with CP at 8th Street, we had a cooperative agreement there that allows us to be able to move rapidly now to close that series of structures where backflow would come into the city at 8th. CP helped us construct a crossing level, if you will, that we can set our Lego blocks on and bisqueen that. We can do that in probably about an hour, hour and a half, and then we totally cover the downtown. So we had really good results with Scott Paradise, their chief engineer. And we... I think we have that all ironed out now. I feel very comfortable. I'm sure Brian could articulate that we had a great working relationship with him. So we feel good about how we anchored that issue from the flood concern. So I have no concerns there.
I believe, from my recollection, and I'm happy to be wrong if I am, that if they close a crossing for more than, I think it might be 15 minutes or something, we have the ability to levy a fine against them. Have we historically done that?
No. Actually, the procedure is that you call... there's an 800 number on every one of their boxes that are next to the signal box, and there's an 800 number there that people call. And that rings right into their, for lack of a better word, air traffic control up in, I think it's Calgary, help me if I'm wrong, Ariel.
Police Communications Center.
CP Police Communications. And they generally will make sure that that gets moved. And if that doesn't work, we can either get ahold of Iowa DOT, who has a rail division, and they would help police that. We've had great conversations with Andy and Ariel about how we can make that a little more expedient. And these particular trains are what they call through trains because they're carrying about 8,000 feet of movement. They move those through. What are typically the people who lock or stop are people that, like Northern is a subsidiary, getting product from local manufacturers and putting them on. So we don't expect that these through trains would cause blockage, but they're long and they will be moving through for 10, 12 minutes while they move through. But we've also talked about, and we think we're gonna do that, put that 800 number back from the right-of-way on city property so that people can see the number and then call, because not very many people know to go to the call bar or the actual box and see the 800 number and call. But if we put it further back and we can call and notify, I think that should be helpful.
So aside from them getting phone calls and maybe us calling the DOT, is there any penalty for them?
There's no... that I'm aware of.
I believe there's some railway lawyers would, I'm sure, love the preemption issues. But I think that there is a DOT... I think there's an Iowa statute relating to this, that I think there is an enforcement mechanism. I think there is some argument that perhaps federal law preempts that. But there is an enforcement mechanism. I know that the police department is involved, and so there is that mechanism. If we need that tool, we can use it.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff Ryder, Director of Community Development. Did you have something you're getting right to?
Yes, Your Honor, I don't overstep my bounds too much, but if I'm right, I believe that the engineer of the train can be cited as well. So he has extreme incentive to continue to push that train through and not stop for extended periods of time.
Bill, we good?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
All right. Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. When you talk quiet zone, I assume that's the train whistle?
Correct.
How... what do you have to do at an intersection to make it a quiet zone? Arm?
It's more than that. It's a very... it's a process, and there's all sorts of different ways that you can make it safe enough to not require the horn. And so it's... Brent, there's a really...
Yeah, Chris, I'd be happy to answer that. Greg, we had, as Chris said, Schneider and Associates. It's a consulting firm, does a lot of rail work in the state, put together a feasibility study, basically looked from 6th Street all the way down to 4th... actually, yeah, stopped at 42nd. It looked at all the crossings, and each one required a varying level of improvement to bring it up to what they think the standard is. So it depends on what's there now. If it's got single gates, if we don't have any, I don't think that actually have all four quadrants gates. Some just have crossbooks. Basically, you have to bring it up to a certain standard so that the engineer would be comfortable knowing that the intersection is fully protected from pedestrians or vehicles, and the need to blow their whistle is not present.
Thank you.
And it's about a million and a half, maybe $2 million in total is what they're estimating right now.
And that would cover about six intersections?
Yeah, I think six or seven, yeah.
Thanks, Jiminy. Scott nominated.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor.
How about you, Frank? Do you have anything? Any questions?
No, sir.
All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as Consent Item B.
Moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take that up in a few minutes. Let's move to Consent Item H for this. We welcome our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt. Mark?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Case to go over with you tonight is... came to you as 21032. It's Lot 1 of Utica Hills Point, maybe more easily remembered as the part of the former location for the Jumers Casino or Jumers Hotel. 2.545 acre parcel, Lot 1 of Utica Hills Point. Current zoning is C6. The future land use is urban medium intensity. Proposed use is a hotel, and that use would align with both the future land use and the current zoning, so no rezoning is needed. There was a 2018 variance for this lot to allow parking in the front yard, which you'll see in a little while why that comes into play. But basically, this portion of the roadway here will have parking in it. And it is Utica approved pending your approval. We do have an overlay district, Utica overlay district, and the fenestration architectural detail does meet our guidelines. Just orient you a little bit, the engineer, when they drew this, they turned... so north is not quite straight up. So when you turn to this page, you'll see it's more askew, if you will. Again, I mentioned some parking in the front yard that was approved in the 2018 variance. One building, four stories, 113 rooms. There is a parking easement with Lot 2. This is the same owner, so that cross easement will be fairly easy to achieve, but they'll have parking between the two hotels that will be shared. And the access is through that Utica Ridge Place to Golden Valley Drive and ultimately onto Utica Ridge Road. I like the drawing a little bit better. Just having the green space kind of makes the building pop out a little bit, and you can see where the parking and things are. Again, north is not exactly straight up. It's more of into your right-hand corner. Lots of sod, lots of greenery to soften up the look of the hotel. It has plenty of trees, exactly, I think, overplanted, and we appreciate that. Does a lot for the softening effect and also some noise cancellation and things like that. Here are the elevations. Hard to see the colors here, but it's kind of a tan and blue and some gray. The tan is mainly in this vicinity here and above some of the doorways, and then kind of a gray color throughout the rest of the structure. And this is kind of a blue, if you will. We did have a positive recommendation from staff and from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We would hope that you would approve this at our next meeting in an hour or two, I guess.
Any questions? We'll start with you, Bill.
Can we go back to the site development plan, Mark?
Sure.
Which version do you want?
Previous slide. There we go. Okay, I'm looking at the fire department connection. Is there gonna be access to that? It appears you have a transformer on one side. And if you look at the next slide, it appears that they've got some sort of decorative features in there that may not give you easy access to the fire department connection. Steve, do you have a comment on that?
Chief, Citizens Chief said have looked at this. I wasn't very familiar with this project, but we'll have to take a look at it when they actually do the work.
With... and I think the thing I would say is, especially with the landscape plans, those are kind of a work in progress. And so we can be... we can kind of manipulate that as we go through the building process. And if those are in the way, we can easily have those moved. And if they're overplanted, maybe just taken out, because I do believe they're overplanted.
Well, I just think it's something that should be... attention should be paid close to before our presence issue. Thank you.
You bet. Other questions for Mark? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So my question is, if you're a client at the new hotel and you want a snack from Quickstar and you don't want to drive over there, which doesn't make sense, and you want to walk over there, how do you get there?
Yeah, so the pedestrian access is not gonna change, so that is what it is. I think if you remember, this was a private road at one point, and the city at some point took it over. So the pedestrian access that is there is the sidewalk frontage is here, and that's what you would have to use. I don't think we'll have any plans to change that. It's not shown or required in the site development plan.
I don't think there is any sidewalk at all on that side of the street. There might be on the opposite side of the street, but in front of Home 2 Suites and Quickstar and Food Affair, there is no sidewalk.
Yeah, I think there's a sidewalk that runs here, if I'm not mistaken. I'm kind of tracing it with the cursor, and that would be... there would not be sidewalks added.
Well, let's... I guess I would request that we check it out because I don't think there is one there.
And practically, they're probably gonna walk right through these parking lots because they all connect.
Well, and I guess if there's a safe walking passage, that's fine. And I guess that's what I'm proposing, to make sure that during the development, that they make sure there is a safe walking passage through the parking lots.
Mark? I just pulled up the mapping, and there is existing sidewalk on the west side of Utica Ridge Place.
Is it gonna stay, though?
Yeah, along the entire length.
Yeah.
It's not on like the... it's normally on the site development line, that's why.
It is present. I know with the overlay on that aerial, you really can't see it, but it is there. Actually, you can see it. Yep, right there.
Kind of right in this... here.
It's just not labeled.
Yeah, it's be right in this area.
Jerry DoorDash.
Pardon?
DoorDash.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions for Mark? Yes, Greg?
Just comment. I think this is better than what we were expecting to get there. Wasn't it just gonna be offices?
Certainly better than an empty lot.
Well, and it was gonna be offices, though, right? So I think this is a better...
Better use.
Better use, yeah.
Any other questions? Thoughts? All right, this is Consent Item H. I'd like to entertain a motion that remain the same.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up Consent H, the next. Also for our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt, this is the discussion on our hazard mitigation property acquisition grant.
Mark? Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. 1106 Hawthorne Drive. This is a reappraisal from a FEMA buyout program that we've talked about several times, but I have had some questions that have come forward in the past few days, so I want to kind of walk back a little bit and just give you a refresher on this program. In 2015, we got our first... well, I'm gonna say first. We had a FEMA grant. We purchased 10 homes under that grant. And the reason why was we were having a lot of complaints from homeowners in this flood plain, these are the same areas, if you will, about the cost of flood insurance and the frequency of floods and damage to their homes. And I think a delegation from this council actually went to Washington DC to lobby for that grant.
We did.
In 2017, we applied again, but there was no award. I don't know why there was no award. If it was a funding issue or something, we just did not receive a reward, but we did apply. But that date's kind of important because in 2017, we did get appraisals for homes in this area. And those appraisals are the appraisals that are still being used today for the buyout program. And 2017 to 2022, we've had a lot of difference in the marketplace. In 2019, we received a grant. But just prior to that grant, we had a one-off, out-of-cycle, out-of-grant purchase. So we own one property outright without FEMA funds at all, and that was due to a special circumstance that occurred. And then in 2019, we got a regular grant, 22 homes approved. We had this thing called COVID happen. Then you had a retirement of a director, and a new director showed up. And so a little bit of delay in that program got you to where we're at in 2022. Oh, and in the meantime, we applied for a grant in 2020 and just today received that award. So we have 17 homes yet to be purchased. I think it's important to look at the totality of all these programs and the properties they purchased and the area that they're creating to understand the potential here, not just from a flood hazard mitigation perspective, but also from a community redevelopment, park and recreation perspective as well. And I think as you look forward from 2015 to 2021 and beyond, you'll start to fill in the gaps, and you'll start to see a piece of ground develop that is gonna be, or I think it might be something special for the city in the future. Let me just show you real quickly kind of how this lays out. So I talked about that 2015 grant. In pink are the homes we purchased in 2015. Lots of buyers were eligible. We ended up narrowing it down to 10 based on timing, life issues when people were able to sell. And you kind of started to get a cluster here along Parkway Drive and then one kind of outlier off of Holly. 2019 comes along, you purchase a one-off home out of grant cycle. We purchased that with city funds. Again, south of Crestview, just north of Parkway. Here's what we've purchased under the 2019 grant to date. Still don't have a real good contiguous area, but you're starting to see something develop between Crestview and Parkway Drive. And with today's award, our 2021 grant, now we get to fill in the blanks and really starting to create a collection of properties south of Crestview down to Parkway that run from the end of Parkway to the edge of the school that create kind of a contiguous Parkway or So now let me read you the property in question. With this property, we have one of about four houses that are still yet to be purchased. Remember, we had 22 we could purchase, we've gotten 12. There's about four I'd still really like to get. This is one of those four, four or five. And you can see it's right on Hawthorne, just up from Parkway. It's adjacent to one unit that's been taken out, catty cornered to one, catty cornered to one over here at 1108, and just one house removed from 1036. So it's really in that sweet spot.
Which one is it? Point to it.
I heard a question, but I know who it came from.
Which one is it? Point to the house.
Oh, yeah, 1106, sorry, on my screen, it's highlighted, it's 1106.
It's a little bit highlighted, but it's okay.
Yeah, it's 1106.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
You're fine.
I would remind you, our appraisals are five years old. This previous appraisal came at $110,000. This buyer or this homeowner has been happy to participate in the program, but has had difficulty finding a home that they can move to in today's market. Our FEMA grant does allow for an alternate appraisal. This homeowner did go out on their own volition, with their own funds, and get one, and it came back at $158,000. There are some FEMA rules, because this is grant funded, remember, for every dollar we spend, we're spending 85 cents of FEMA money. FEMA lets us accept reappraisals if we want to, you don't have to, if you want to. But it's kind of a, it's either a yes or no game, it's a one or a zero. You can either take that appraisal, or you can say, take the original appraisal, or take nothing. Those are your three options. You can't negotiate, and there's all kinds of reasons for that, but it's the rule. And so reappraisals are allowed, you can accept it or not. The homeowner can take our offer at the original price, or we can give them the new appraisal, or we can just not buy the house. But we can't negotiate in between. I think the program goal, while it's about flood hazard mitigation, I think something larger is building here. And while flood hazard mitigation is primary, and certainly this weekend's flash flood is evidence to that, there's some other things that are going on here. In Parkway and green space, we have the ability to make Parkway Drive and create a sense of place that really creates a system of parks, a park on one end of Parkway Drive and a park on the other end, east and west. Parkway Drive could connect to two feature parks of the city. And would also maybe help us closer to a goal of, we have a community neighborhood enhancement for this part of town. And when I say this part of town, I mean Parkway Drive all the way up to Magnolia, where we've talked about some issues in this neighborhood that we'd like to address and hopefully gentrify. And adding this amenity might be one step of many that we might take to improve this area. Almost done. Budget impact. I think it's really important to understand that from a budget impact, this is zero impact to the city's budget. We, because we've only purchased 12, and we're being more careful about the homes we purchase. We didn't go out and buy all 22. Remember, we got skinny, we narrowed it down to the ones we wanted. We have spent less money. We will not spend the entire budget, and our total local match will not reach that $445,000 figure you see in front of you. We won't touch that, because we won't buy several of those homes. We've chosen, we've decided those are too far afield. So I would be surprised that if we even reach a local commitment of $250,000 or $300,000, I'd be surprised by that. This grant closes in November of 2022, so we only have a few months. It takes a while to demo these houses. We only have a few months to get this done. Remember, I said I had four or five that I really wanted to get. When I reached out to those people, only two came back, this property being one of them. And I don't expect other homeowners to come in. If you were talking just dollars, the impact to us is about seven grand. But again, we budgeted 400 grand, and we're probably only going to spend 250. And every dollar we spend, remember, is 85 cents of the feds', 15 cents of ours. That's my last slide. I know at the next meeting, I think the homeowners here, and they would like to share some of their thoughts with you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark?
You know, it's just a statement. You know, when you say it's not our money, it's FEMA money, no, it's all taxpayer dollars, Mark. It's all everybody's money. So I don't like that analogy when you use it, so that's all I'm going to say about that.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got some real concerns, and that in the last several meetings, we've had significant discussion about item seven on the agenda tonight, which is 1200 Devil's Glen. And the part of the discussion was, we need this R4 rezoning, because we need affordable housing. Well, this house here, 1106, is a good example of affordable housing. It's currently assessed for only $118,000. The roof was new only two years ago, in 2020. The siding was new in 2013. The HVAC is only 12 years old. I drove by the house, and the house has got a fence that's recently repaired or replaced. The neighborhood looks good. It's affordable housing, and the houses on either side of it also look good. You know, we don't see the houses in this area show up on the top 10 code enforcement. I'm having, I'm having some real concerns about it. The reasons we did this several years ago have pretty much gone away. It hasn't flooded down there for what, 30, 35 years?
Doesn't make any difference in terms of FEMA's designation.
That's true, yeah. But I'm concerned about our residents, and I don't, and I want to protect our residents from flood. But at the same time, if it hasn't flooded in that long, maybe it won't, maybe that we've fixed the problem with retention ponds, retention ponds, keeping the creek clean, that we're not going to have the same problem that we had a few years ago. The insurance payments have changed. With the housing market, these people don't have problems selling the houses down there. You know, I walked, I drove through there, and I didn't see a single real estate sign. So I think those homes that, when they go on the market, they're selling. So I have some real concerns about this.
Mark, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but Jerry's suggesting that the FEMA insurance rates have changed or that something has changed that has reduced the need for these folks in the floodplain to have this type of service through FEMA to purchase the houses. Do you know if those, if there's been some change to the skyrocketing FEMA rates? I understand there was an entry into the market for private insurance on the houses, but it's still, I would assume they're paying more than their mortgage for private insurance or for flood insurance, because that's what we, we saw that evidence, that's why we got in this game.
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Yeah, I think there, to your point, and I think I've shared with this council before, that the private impact of insurance was a mitigating factor, but it was not zero. People's insurance, flood insurance rates did not go down to zero, and it burdens them for many of these individuals. And I think when we have our next meeting again here in a half hour now, probably, the homeowner would like to share with you the impact on their budget from the flood insurance rates that they're forced to pay by their mortgage company. So I would, I would be glad to kind of turn the mic over at the appropriate time in our next meeting to the homeowner, because they'll have a much more accurate depiction. And then the other thing is about the quality of housing. Affordable and quality housing are two items that I have some experience in. And when I go into these homes, they are very flood damaged. The interiors of these homes, the ones we purchased, have had years of inundation, and the foundations and the interior walls are not in good shape.
Other questions for Mark? Frank, go ahead, then come back to Jerry.
Okay. This is, thank you, Your Honor, this is for Mark. Mark, could you, on your map there that showed the houses that I bought that were in grain, can you show us where the two that you're trying to get right now are and where, I think you said you had two that I pulled out? How do they affect this map?
So roughly, the house that we're talking about today is is right about here. And then last, two meetings ago, maybe a month or two ago, we had another house that's just off screen. Again, paralleling Parkway Drive, which is one of our target areas, because we want to parallel across from the existing Parkway. A house 1030, maybe 1030 or 1036 Parkway. It's getting just off the screen right here, so I can't show it to you easily.
Can you pull your near map back up?
Yeah, I can do that.
Show this property and then show 1030 Parkway.
So here's 1106, so it would add to these, we'd only, we only have one more property on Hawthorne. If we added this one. And then I believe it was 1030 that we approved last time, again, with the goal of connecting from the terminus of Parkway Drive all the way, this whole frontage, all the way up to the edge of school property, so that you'd have kind of one continuous pathway or dual pathways, perhaps.
That answer your question, Frank?
Yes, I think it does, it shows that they're important to what we're trying to do there, and that's all I want.
Thank you, sir. Back to Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion that we pull this from the consent agenda.
Can we do that? Let's do that after we have, anybody else have questions? I know we were going to have you do that, that's totally fine, any other questions? All right, go ahead, Jerry, nobody has another question. Go for it.
I move that we pull this from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, this will go on your regular agenda, you want to put this where? At number 10? 11 consent?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's look at our remaining consent agenda items for tonight's meeting. Is there any particular item on consent, any council person would like to discuss or ask a question about at this time? Frank, you got anything on consent?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that they all remain on consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll take up our entire consent agenda with one vote, except item I, that will move to our regular agenda. It will be item 10. All right, any operational items anybody wants to discuss? Some third readings and a couple stop signs. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 7 o'clock or 7:02 PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors? Connors?
Oh, here, he's here.
Aye.
Nomin?
Hi, Bill.
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
All right, thank you all for being here. Now, if you'd all please rise, remove any caps or head dresses you may have, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please remain standing for an invocation thereafter, given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor Basberry, United Methodist Church. Pastor Tom Carver, Pastor Tom, thanks for coming.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Tom.
Stand by with me for a word. God of justice and compassion, we've just celebrated the anniversary of our nation's independence. We ask for your grace to help us remember that while we might value independence as a nation, as human beings, we're never really meant to be completely independent. We must live together in neighborhoods, in communities such as our beloved Bettendorf. We pray for our leaders to be guided by justice and compassion, and may we be inspired by the last line of that Declaration of Independence, which says, "For the support of this Declaration with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. May we do the same in our community today." Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tom, good to see you. All right, we'll move to public requests of council. I know there's some folks here that may want to talk about the manor flooding issue, so I'd like to have a look, just a brief update on the work we did yesterday, from the second it started raining through today. Give us our update as to where we are at this point in time, please, City Engineer Brent Morlock.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, so we've got, what I'm holding here is actually our documentation report. So every construction project in the city that disturbs enough ground is required to take out what we call a COSESCO permit. So that's our site erosion control permit. That's in conjunction, so we are mandated by the Iowa DNR to enforce the MS4 program. So that delegates down to our engineering staff. So we go out and inspect at least once a quarter, we're required to do so. I've got about five pages of documentation from the various checks for this site, knowing the high-profile nature, as well as being an infill project, which also could lead to some issues. As we are aware, there was a flooding event that took place on Sunday. The contractor preparing for the weather on Friday, after they were working on their detention basin, placed two large straw waddles, the straw filter socks that you see on construction sites. They placed two of those around the newly constructed area intake, and one of them, they should not have put the top one on place. That ended up silting in and completely clogging the outflow, so you were getting no storm water into the pipe, and it all discharged off the site. So that is a violation of our ordinance. They were issued a municipal citation this morning, once we got outside, onsite and looked at it. They did have a previous violation notice that was issued for some minor silt loss on June 8th. Not uncommon with construction sites, especially infill sites, we do see occasionally, no matter how much they try to protect it, that still things can happen. But obviously, this was completely unacceptable. And like I just said, we issued the municipal citation. They were allowed to work today just to continue working on the detention basin, that's what needs to be finished. The basin itself was partially graded today, they were able to finish all the pipe work, and the outlet structure was built, so that is a huge step in making sure that something like this does not happen again. They also did finish the berm on the, we'll call it the southwest side, basically the side facing the manor, was finished today as well. That was not in place, unfortunately, on, over the weekend when the rain events happened. So we do feel confident that the work they've done will lead to, hopefully, no further disruptions.
Brent, did we send anybody over to talk to the folks at the manor? I think we sent door to door.
Yeah, so Jeremy Peterson, Chief Building Official, was down there this morning. Rob Dipover, who's our erosion sediment control tech, was there most of the day, meeting with both contractors, and I believe he did talk to some members of, or some residents of the manor. I don't believe we were able to gain access to any of the units, unfortunately, and I can't blame them, the homeowners were not present. The HOA did not want anyone to have access to their units without them being present.
Makes sense.
Did talk to the developer, who did have their, one of their contractors also onsite cleaning up the silt that was on the sidewalks and the hardscape paths. The silt loss, they reported to us that, that was in the green space areas, so that's in the sod areas. Going to have to wait for that to dry out, and then they will strip that and coordinate with them and re-sod the areas and regrade that.
Okay, thank you. City Administrator Eckerplane, what's your update? I know you were on the phone with the developer and some other folks.
Thank you, Your Honor. I spoke to Kevin Dolan yesterday afternoon, when we mobilized Brian, while we were up at the Street Fest. And Brian went down yesterday afternoon, made an assessment about how fast they could get their teams in there yesterday afternoon. He assured me they would be there first thing this morning, which now Brent reports that they got the berm built. I spoke to him again last night and said that they had to, they'll probably get cited, and they need to be on full resources this morning, which they did. I gave him Bob Anderson's number, the Homeowner Association President. I know that he and Bob spoke later this afternoon, I think it was probably about 4:35 o'clock. I'm not sure of the outcome, but Kevin assured me that he would work with the Homeowners Association to try to make sure that there were any damage they had on the common areas that they would clean up, and he would personally visit with anyone affected and that affected, and that between their insurance and if there was homeowner insurance filed, they would work that out. But he assured me that they would, uh, he did not want this to tarnish the, the project, and he would do everything in his power to make sure that everything was right. Based on the work that they did today, um, which was pretty substantial in the opening up, and there was some remedial, uh, behind the berm, I believe there's some, uh, Brian, some erosion, additional erosion control measures behind the berm as well.
Correct.
So we believe that we've got the site pretty well stabilized. It's, it really needs this detention area to get built and functional. We believe it's probably three quarters functional, might be the way to say it. Um, and it needs to get, um, grass and/or sod on it, um, so that any erosion there is, um, uh, taken care of. But I believe we're pretty comfortable that the immediate circumstance has been stabilized. Um, and we're gonna stay on this and, uh, stay in conversations with, um, both Mr. Dolan, and I know, uh, Lisa spoke to Bob Anderson, uh, initially, and I think may have, I'm not sure if he talked to her yesterday, but she gave me my number. I really appreciate that, uh, Lisa. And, um, I, I've, Bob has called me several times, and I told him we would, we would stay on it, and he can call me anytime he wants to. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that we've got this in tow, and thanks to Brian for going down there yesterday and making that initial assessment, and Brent and, and Mark, uh, for going down there today. And I feel pretty good that we've got our hands around this as best, as best we can, again, knowing that this is the private developer's responsibility, not the city's responsibility.
Understood, but thank you for your work.
I don't know if Brian has anything to add, Your Honor.
Um, just wanted to say that it was, um, it was unfortunate that an event like this happened, but, um, just seeing the work that was done today, I feel pretty confident, as well as the city engineer, that the controls that are in place, uh, will definitely help for any future events, but then we'll just work with the contractor, um, uh, who is need of excavating, uh, like, like, uh, Mr. Plane said earlier, they were out there excavating and putting the berm in, that's in place, but there's still some work to be out there. But, uh, if we get a rain event like we did yesterday, uh, I'm pretty confident that it would be all detained within that area. But we'll continue working with the developer on making sure that that detention basin is completed, uh, holistically before we move and have them advance further up into the project.
And, and just one final point, Your Honor. This was two and one quarter inches of water that we, uh, measured in our rain gauge at Palmer Hills, uh, in probably less than an hour or close to hour and fifteen minutes. When I was leaving here to go up to the Street Fest, there were two kids that were surfing on Eighteenth Street, coming down to Duck Creek. The water was deep enough in the street that it was over the curb, and they were literally surfing on a surfboard down the street at me. So we had a lot of water in a very short period of time, uh, and this detention area, once fully built, should be able to handle almost all of that and has a mechanism for topping over at that point.
Yeah, that, we calculated somewhere between a ten and a twenty-five year storm event was yesterday. The final design will accommodate a hundred year storm event.
And release at?
A five-year release rate.
Okay. All right, so if there's anybody here who wishes to be heard in public requests of council, uh, be reminded that you have a couple of minutes, two or three minutes. Please try not to be repetitive and make sure that you're respectful of, uh, the folks in the room. No outbursts and clapping and yelling kinds of things. So, uh, it's a professional meeting, but we'd love to hear from you. So if you'd like to be heard, especially if it's about the manor project, since we just talked about that and got an update, right now it'd be your, be your opportunity. You can approach the podium, state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you.
My name is Bev Strehal, and, um, I'm the person that texted the poor mayor constantly during the rain.
That's why you have my number. It worked out just great. I just wish I could have fixed it for you.
Lots of texts, lots of videos, I tell, yes, constant. Um, I just want to say I get that this was a huge event, rain event, but you were all aware prior to that, that we had problems, we had concerns. The water kept creeping up and creeping up. In fact, one of our residents actually went out and sandbagged her door, just in case, because the water kept getting closer and closer each time it rained. So I heard, I don't know how accurate this is, that, um, Mr. Dolan was asked to work on getting that pawned in. In fact, if I could quote one of your employees, he should have done that prior to doing any of this other work to prevent this from happening. I think that was Brian Schmidt that said that. I heard him. He said it to me. So I think everybody knew from day one. I mean, clear back when we were all here in, just en masse, saying, "This isn't a good idea. It doesn't even look like your comprehensive plan includes this in this kind of development." We asked and asked and, um, were pretty unrelenting, don't feel like we were heard or we were very much dismissed. So I kind of am at the point where I don't really care what kind of rain event was. This should have been foreseen, and it should have been taken care of. This is not, this is not acceptable, and you don't just get to say, "Gosh, we had a lot of rain. Too bad. Too bad your yards flooded and you were overtaken by mud, and you were all scared out of your wits and had to have the fire department come and extricate a resident." It's not okay.
Thank you, Mr. Strehal, Mrs. Strehal. Please don't feel bad about texting me. That's what it's for.
I got your number.
Yes, you do.
I've been dealing with mud in the basement. I lived on that end. I just moved there April first. Um, today, when I drove by, I thought it did look like it will contain anything we might get tonight. It was a lot.
Can you do me a quick favor and give us your name and your address? It's okay.
Connie Wilson, and I live at the manor.
Thank you, Connie.
And I'm right down on the corner, eleven fifteen. It did get in my basement. I have a new furnace down there, but I kept the water away. Um, nobody has cleaned up that basement a, as of yet. The door is still standing open down there. I don't know whose responsibility that is, but I'm worried about mold and mildew because it was coming through the walls and down the walls of the basement. But like I said, it does look like now it will be taken care of. It's deep enough and high enough to protect us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Who else wishes to be heard on this topic?
Hi, I'm Haley Jones. I live at sixteen oh five Coughell Avenue. Um, I know a lot of this is dealing with the manor, but we are on the surrounding property from the new development, and I know that we're focused on not having that flooding happen again, which is amazing, but one of the main concerns that I actually said last year was dealing with the erosion that's taking, going to be taking place once all of those trees were gone. And that is exactly what's still happening with the property lines around the development, not just at the manor. So, uh, last month, we actually had to have Mid-American come out and replace a power, uh, a power line pole because it was sliding down from the erosion. We have a very steep, um, backyard that, uh, I brought to the attention last year that, what are we gonna do? Because once those trees are gone, our backyard's gonna erode, and we are losing soil slowly. And I was like, can we do a retaining wall? And that was kind of just put back on us, like, you can do that, that's your property. But unfortunately, because all of those trees were taken away, the erosion's happening faster and faster. I went and stood back there today, and that soil is loose, and that hasn't really been loose, and I know that it's just because of the rain and whatnot, but, I mean, you step on it, and it's just sliding down. So I definitely would attribute some of that to the tree removal, but I do just want to make it known that it's not just the manor that's suffering, it is the property, uh, properties along the other side of the development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anybody else want to be heard on the manor topic? Okay, let's open up to anything else on other public requests of council. Mark, did you?
Your Honor, I think we have one person on a different topic.
Yep, that's perfectly fine, and I think we'll be able to hear them from here with the microphone above them, so let's give that a try. But let's start with your name and address.
I'm Kathy Sands. This is Al Sands, and we live at the eleven oh six Hawthorne Drive. I'm going to make a statement that I wrote, and then I'm gonna make up the time then. But one comment I have to make to that gentleman. He said our house looks nice, and that was in order to sell the home. We put in a six-foot fence, brand new. Brand new. And several of the buyers said we needed a brand-new fence. Okay? The comments made from sellers are they want granite countertops and everything. We run, we've redone everything in the home, outside of the home, and the roof was two years old because it was hail damage. So that, um, so, um, Mr. Mayor and all clinical, sorry, I work in the hospital industry, um, council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our case for selling our home to the city through the flood mitigation program. We have tried unsuccessfully to sell our house due to the following factors of rising cost of homes, rising interest rates, and continued increases in flood insurance, which has proven to be very challenging. In two thousand and three, when we bought our home, FEMA flood insurance was seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. FEMA has now risen to four thousand dollars per year. In two thousand and seventeen, we purchased private insurance on the, from a suggestion from the city of Bettendorf. We, um, we purchased private flood insurance at eleven hundred dollars a year. Now it has doubled to over twenty-two hundred dollars a year. Any new buyers that get any FHA loans is required to purchase FEMA, which is a downfall. No one wants to purchase a home due to these factors. We are finding our sellers, we are finding, we are moving for, we want to move for health reasons, um, in our retirement years. Um, we need to move to a home with no stairs. I have, walking up and downstairs causes excruciating pain. My husband and I appreciate your consideration of buying our home at the current appraisal value provided to you by us. We need this amount so we can purchase another home. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Al Sands, her husband. I apologize for not standing up, but we're both, uh, on the handicap side. The insurance thing, I don't think everybody has a clue, or at least what's going on with flood insurance. Like she said, seven hundred and fifty bucks a year in two thousand and three, it eventually got up to over twenty-four, I don't know, something like that, twenty-four hundred dollars a year. Through your, uh, suggestion, we went and searched for private insurance through American Family, who was our homeowners, and we're able to reduce that in half. But over the course of the last four or five years, they've bumped it all the way up to over twenty-two hundred dollars. Now, our great government, FEMA and FHA, F in both of them stands for the same thing, federal. Okay? They're in cahoots. If someone wants to get an FHA loan, and a lot of young people do because it's a low down payment, they are automatically required to buy their flood insurance from FEMA, which right now for that property is at about four thousand dollars. Okay, now you add that to high interest rates, and, and also the high cost of homes, these people are not gonna buy in that neighborhood, which is why you do not see for sale signs in that neighborhood, because we've all given up. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Sands. Yep, briefly.
We had an FHA loan, and we got a letter in the mail saying that we had to have FEMA. We had to take our money and redo the loan as an, as a conventional in order not to pay
The FEMA rate.
The FEMA rate.
Yeah.
So that cost us money, plus I had to pay for an appraisal as your requirement. So I, I really wish we could get the full amount. I love Bettendorf. I've been here since nineteen seventy-nine. I know Mr. Adamson. And I love Bettendorf, and I want to stay in Bettendorf, but I can't afford a house if you only offer me a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I, I think I should have the one fifty-eight. And I'm just clarifying, that's what we need to move.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Sands. Anybody else wish to be heard on public requests of council? You can be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you. Okay, let's close public requests of council. We'll, uh, move to our first ordinance. This is for Councilmember Webster to present.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code, Section six dash one dash three two two B two, vehicles entering yield intersection by adding yield intersections at Christie Lane and Berkshire Drive, on Grove Crossing, Cash Path, Jake's Lane, crossing Court, and Matthews Pass, Matthews Court, and Cash Path.
Second.
I'll move approval of the ordinance at first reading.
You know what Jerry said? Jerry will second it.
I'll second. Yes, he didn't get it out yet.
There wasn't a motion yet.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. No problem. All right, is there any discussion about these yield signs? Or the need there for, out in your ward, Mr. Webster? All right, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Noman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the first reading of that ordinance. We'll move to another first reading. Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code, Section six dash one dash one thirty-one, no parking zones enumerated by adding a no parking zone on Ontario Drive. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Noman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
That first reading also unanimously passes. Let's move to Councilmember Noman for, Noman for a third reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. Due to the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa Zone Map for twelve hundred Devil's Glen Road, R one, single-family residence district, R four, medium-density, multifamily residence district. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second. Any discussion here? Third and final reading. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Connors?
Aye.
Noman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
All right. This third reading also passes. We move to Councilmember Connor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, by repealing City Code, Section seven dash one dash one, solicitation in public areas. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Any discussion on Councilmember Connors? Motion. All right. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Connors?
Aye.
Noman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
All right, we got to move back to eight. Councilmember Sexer, I'm sorry, I skipped your third and final reading.
That's all right. Thank you, Your Honor. I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, Section 8-2-6, Corin E. Relating to the city's sewer meter credit program. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Third and final reading? Okay. Michelle, please call the roll.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Earlier this evening at our committee, the whole meeting, we removed Consent Agenda Item I and placed it on our regular agenda. At this time, is there a council member who wishes to move approval of Consent I? Craig? Thank you, Councilmember Adamson.
No extra charge, Your Honor. Move a resolution approving an appeal to the offer price for a home, 1106 Hawthorne Drive, purchased under the Hazard Mitigation Property Acquisition Grant, Sub Ward Agreement, DR 4386001910, Community Development, uh, move approval.
Second.
Read too far.
You're just fine. Well done. Thanks for pinch hitting. Okay. We have a motion of second. Is there discussion on Consent I? I now moved here. Yes, Councilmember Adamson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things. Lisa and I, and probably Frank, on the park board. And back in the 90s, we identified areas where we thought that there needed to be some green space. And we tried to get developers to donate, all that sort of stuff. Didn't work. One of the areas was this area. And there was, it was wall-to-wall houses. No place, we couldn't afford to buy a bunch of homes. And so there just wasn't going to happen. This, one of the main reasons I'm so enthusiastic about this, this is an opportunity to help some citizens as well as get rid of some homes that are in the floodplain and give us an opportunity, if we, if we're smart about it and pick the right houses and save the money for the right houses, we, we got a chance to do a nice, uh, green space area down there. And I understand what Bill, what Bill said about the taxes, but we, we all pay federal and state taxes. And how much of that money comes back to, to the citizens? This is an opportunity for us to, to recoup some of those tax dollars for, for a very worthwhile project. And I am 100% in support of this, this particular motion, but also the, the whole project. I mean, we started this thing years ago. Let's see the thing through. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Lisa? Councilmember Brown?
He said ditto.
Oh, ditto. Okay. Councilmember Connors?
I'm looking at the, the map that Director Hunt showed. And I mean, all of that property, even if he gets all the houses he wants, are not going to be contiguous. We're seeing houses here and there. And, uh, I will say that I was going to vote against this until I listened to the homeowners. They're in passion plea and, uh, talking about how HUD requires should have FEMA insurance with that basically is kind of an unfair premise. And I can see how that can really hang string trying to move a house, especially for young folks. So, uh, I'm going to vote in favor of this. Doesn't mean I'm going to vote in favor of everyone going forward, but I'll be an affirmative on this one.
Any other discussion? Looking this way, we'll go to Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, hats off to staff again. Not only Mark your work, but your predecessors done an amazing job. And this was not, this was born out of crisis, Biggar Water Sack, the reality of the flood insurance, and then us trying to figure out how to wrestle with the realities of the folks that lived in that neighborhood. And I'm sure that there's not one person that's been in goal setting or looking at the budget to try to figure out, is this still a program of merit? And are we doing the right thing and trying to, it may have started years ago, was trying to help folks. But now, does it still have validation? You know, thank you for coming here tonight and sharing your thoughts and your perspectives. And I think that maybe offline, we've talked about, if we stop now, if we get weak in the knees on this now, then are, did the problem get worse by plucking off your neighbors and your neighboring houses? And now we don't have a neighborhood anymore. We have these one-off homes. That's the exact wrong thing. So eventually, to Mark's point, if we can get some contiguous properties and come up with some sort of adventure park or something that connects that area, I sincerely believe that is the best outcome as the ward alderman in that area tried tirelessly to advocate and figure out and validate, have conversation after conversation. But there's, there's just a point at which we have to continue. I think we're at that point today. Thank you, Your Honor.
You. Any other discussion? Councilmember Webster? We're going to go right to you, Frank. That sounds good. Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to discuss this issue at length with, uh, Mark Hunt this morning. And I've got to be honest with you, at that time, I probably was a no vote. Some of the others on the council now, I am going to vote in favor of it. I, I don't like having to pay more for the properties than we had them assessed at earlier, but I understand too what's going on. But I'd also like to just point out to everybody in case they don't look at it this way. If you remember going to Greenville, South Carolina for Forward Cities, we got to look at some beautiful, beautiful work that was done along a river or a creek. I don't know what they called it. Had the same opportunity here with this property that we're acquiring to, uh, put a real big footprint for Bettendorf on Duck Creek. And so I am going to vote for it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Webster, please.
It was probably a creek. So, might have been a creek. Not a creek, a creek. I, I like the contiguous part of it. And I think I want to reiterate that that's what gets me there. I realize we may not ever get completely there, but that's the direction we're trying to go. And, and living with an insurance agent, I can tell you that is true, the FHA thing. I think it's also true of any federal loan. So VA loans, I believe, have to have, uh, FEMA insurance. You don't get that option for the private insurance. And the private insurance, oddly enough, had the conversation because insurance come up. And it is starting to stack up again because they're having losses where they didn't think they were going to have losses and the numbers still work their way out. So I'm in favor of this and trying to get that contiguous. So I think the direction we're headed, hopefully, sometime will get us to that spot. I'm supportive of that all the way to there.
Yes, Councilmember Adamson.
One more thing, Your Honor. Thank you. The appraisal's five years old. It's naturally going to be, the way, everybody's aware of what your house value is now. Since, and we may have this come up again, but I think we need to, staff needs to be more, uh, more focused. Not that they're not, but more focused on a certain homes. And maybe this will even incentivize some of the people that aren't willing to do it now to do it if they think that they will get the, the value of their home out of it. So I think we need to be really careful which ones we do get and use the money to get the ones that, that are going to help us with our, our goal.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Webster? Well, we'll go to Councilmember Sexer since we hadn't heard from him yet. Sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand the, the issue on insurance and FEMA and FHA. At the same time, I consider that a separate issue, that if that's an issue, we should be working on that with our legislators. You know, our, our federal legislators, our senators and our representatives. Uh, election's coming up this ye, this year. Maybe this is a time to make it an election issue for those people. At the same time, I am concerned about affordable housing in Bettendorf. And in a, in a house that's under $200,000, even if it does have a little bit of insurance costs, it's still much more affordable for new homeowners than paying $400,000 and they still have to buy insurance.
Thank you, Councilmember Webster.
I'm, I'm a little less confident in Washington DC actually doing something. So, um, the, um, question I had was, and this is not necessarily for this, but those areas that could make it contiguous, could we set a policy where if they decline us, then we won't go back and raise their estimate? Or we won't accept it? Because if we're going to somebody, they're declining it, and then all of a sudden they're coming back 10 years later and saying, oh, well, we'll take it, but we're going to raise it. If they declined us when we went the first time, then I could understand that a little bit different. But if we're waiting, if they're doing it just to wait 10 years to try to get 10 years worth of higher expenses.
I think Mark said, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if they brought in appraisal at a different time when we were in the timeframe of the program, I doubt it would be 10 years down the road, but I suppose it could be. We have the option to say, no, yes, or we're staying with our old.
I'm just wondering if people know that that's our policy, that they may be more apt to take that deal now rather than saying, we can wait. We can wait this out because they'll raise. Then it'll become worth more. If it, if it's something maybe for our discussion in October or whenever it may be, it may be something that would be able to tell people and Mark would have the availability to say, listen, you're contiguous, you're going to be part of this program, but if you decline it, we're not going to come back and, and raise it in years to come. The policy would be this at this point.
Mr. Hunt?
Thanks, Your Honor, and, and thanks, Alderman Webster, for that question. I think it's, it's two, I have two answers for that. One is, I hope we don't repeat the circumstances that led us to having five-year-old appraisals and being, having to offer those to people in 2022. And, and that was caused by, as I reiterated, COVID, um, a weird grant cycle where we went for a grant, we got denied, but we, for some reason, decided to use those appraisals again. So those circumstances, I hope, never get repeated again, you know, COVID and all that stuff. Secondly, is the rules of the program probably won't change. So those will be the rules. But when we applied for our current grant, which we just received award on, we were very narrow in our focus. So I only put in those properties that fall in that tight area. So nothing north of Crestview. If I'm saying that correctly, yeah. So nothing north, north of Crestview. So kind of in the green or whatever color that was, blue area, houses we're buying. Now, these are all voluntary. I can't force anybody to do it. And somebody may have told me, yeah, I'm going to sign up for it. And then, you know, I talked tomorrow, they could change your mind. That's fine. But I think what we won't have is that long protracted timeframe of appraisal, grant application, COVID, retirement, new director, all those things that happened that created this circumstance.
Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
No.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
So six to one, we pass the resolution approving the appeal of the offered price for 1106 Hawthorne. Let's take a look at our consent agenda that does not include I, but every other item there. If there is a council member who is ready to make a motion to approve the same, I'd entertain it.
I move. Second.
Any discussion on a particular item on this agenda? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved each and every other item on our consent agenda for this evening. We'd like to move to executive session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5, Sub 1C, for the purpose of discussing litigation strategy. Like to have someone entertain that motion at this time.
Make a motion.
Two motions in two seconds. You guys get to choose who you want. But this is a roll call vote to enter. Michelle?
Connors.
Aye.
Nauman.
Aye.
Sexer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Okay, we're about to enter an executive session, and that means that I'm going to politely ask you to exit our chambers for counsel and our attorney to have a little discussion. So thank you all for being here. Okay, are we back? Perfect. We have exited executive session. It's now 10 minutes to nine or 8:50 PM. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I move. Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work.